Okay, I will go ahead and start the city council portion of the special council meeting as we wait for MDC members. Just to note that we also have board member Winter here. All councilor in attendance with the exception of Councilman Kavner. And so I'll go ahead and move to item number two, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Barantire.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes was carried, and I will ask if you will please speak up. Make sure the mic and Dean can hear us. Item number two is the downtown placemaking. The MDC board has seen this presentation, so hopefully they'll be here for the discussion part of it. Now I'll turn this over to Caleb.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, members of the MDC board, members of the Business Association Downtown. Thank you all for attending today. I have a packet, and there's probably two because Brian's presentation next, but I will be working from the action plan that Project for Public Places and Idaho Smart Growth recently completed. As the mayor just mentioned, the MDC board has received the presentation, as did the DBA here recently, but the city council has not. We thought it'd be a good opportunity for all the parties that are most closely linked to some of the recommendations in this report to get together and discuss some of the recommendations within it and priorities, and a little bit more on that. So, let me jump into the presentation. So, Ada County Association of Realtors and Idaho Smart Growth won a grant from the National Association of Realtors, and they hired a partnership for public spaces this last year and in March, on March 19th and 20th, they held a two-day workshop with various stakeholders downtown. They all came together and with the idea to look for lighter, quicker, cheaper placemaking opportunities in the downtown core. So, without getting too much into what lighter, quicker, cheaper is, it's sort of within that name that they've trademarked, but it has to do a lot with activities and minimal investment that you can do almost immediately to create successful places. And what is a successful place? It's where people want to gather and be, essentially. So I'm going to run through that report. Excuse me. That placemaking team held one-on-one interviews again with stakeholders, various folks that attended various sessions of that two-day workshop. They conducted place audits. They created the report that you all have in front of you right now today. Some of the things they heard was there's a need for more places to go downtown. They need places, there's a need for places to display art and culture. There's a need to make a process of showing art easier. City Hall Plaza was identified as a place where potentially more activity should occur. Downtown needs more places to sit and hang out outside. We need to find a way to bring more millennials downtown. That's something we've heard before. There are a number of strong assets downtown, but they are spread out and disconnected from one another. So as you'll see in the report, there are various recommendations to connect these nodes to each other through these various activities that are identified. So there were 14 sites that were selected based on that, again, the audits, the walkabouts downtown, the stakeholder interviews, and these sites were selected for potential lighter, quicker, cheaper, what they call interventions or improvements or activities. They also went as far as from these 14 to recommend four initial priority projects and sites. They identified team leads, support, and then potential activities for those first four, and I'll highlight those. Today what we'd like to do is again have you all get together and talk about what sites make the most sense to do projects on, and then talk about what potential projects are or other improvements. Identify who would take the lead in making sure that those sites and projects move forward, and then who would play support roles, and then finally identify potentially other resources or partners that may need to be engaged to make that a successful project. So if you can keep in mind that they are supposed to be lighter, quicker, cheaper. I mean, that's the idea with a lot of these placemaking is something that should be relatively easy to implement and see on the ground. So I'm going to just take a few minutes and run through the 14 sites, or at least 13 of the 14 sites, but I'm not going to go into a whole lot of depth. If you'd like to follow along, I'll start on page five of the handout and just highlight some of those things, but again, I'm going to move pretty quickly because I would like most of this meeting to be a discussion amongst you all about what sites slash projects activities you like and who should be the lead and move that forward. So the first site identified was City Hall Plaza right outside. This is one of the top four priorities. It was number four recommendation from the action plan. Initially Shelley Houston and Brian McClure were kind of identified as team lead and support. As you can see, some of the recommendations have always already taken place. The tables and chairs, Brian has been very diligently putting those out with a little support from information services staff on Tuesdays and putting it away every day, but the tables and chairs and umbrellas outside were one of the things that we're already implementing. Some of the other things are periodic social events, and we already have some, but they recommended some more there. Another example would be to bring like Cable One Movie Night downtown into the City Hall Plaza. Site two is the parking lot between City Hall and Main Street, so just a little bit east of the plaza there. Some of the potential activities recommended there would be to remove a handful of spaces, parking spaces at the corner of Main and Broadway, and incorporate them into a small open space area. Maybe have some food trucks with tables and chairs and umbrellas at that location. Site number three, and I've got a map also on the overhead that corresponds with the sites there. Site three is also identified by Idaho Smart Growth as a priority project. It was priority number two, location, the parking lot between the Bank of Cascades and the MDC buildings, including the alley. So there's kind of two different places, but they are connected there to make sort of an L shape. Potential activities for the parking lot include creating space to be programmed by Mac and the library, a potential tie into activity nights programmed at City Hall Plaza, and then the alley, using the alley for seating and tables, food coffee vendors, and maybe a fruit vegetable produce stands at that location. And there are again potential other activities that could occur at those locations. These are just ones that were identified in those two-day workshops. Site number four is the parking lot behind Harvest Church and the alley. Potential activities here include creating space to be programmed again by Mac and the library, movie night, children's theater, school band or recital areas. So those are just some of the things that I'm highlighting there as potential activities. Site five is the southeast corner of Main and Idaho. Some potential activities include events with food trucks and music, and then doing the weekend parklets. For those of you that aren't familiar with, or it's been some time since you've heard the term parklet, that would just be basically taking over again temporarily the parking stalls there that are angled parking on Main Street and converting it to outdoor seating potentially for dining or other activities, but it would be to again repurpose parking for a weekend for public use other than parking of vehicles. Site number six is Generations Plaza. This is the number one recommendation from the report. It's the center of downtown, was one of the reasons it was the number one recommendation. A lot of the stakeholders and people that participated in the two-day workshop identified it as a strong place to connect the businesses downtown. It is sort of the, I mean, it is in the core of our downtown. Some of the potential activities there would be more seating and colorful umbrellas, wrapping some utility boxes or other walls that are there with some opportunities to play games or paint them with chalk, magnetic word wall, and then a need for more shade in that location. Site number seven is the other one that was in the top four. This is recommendation number four to do a project, and this is the Idaho Avenue between Main Street and Second Avenue. So this is a full block length, and essentially this one is, they recommend right sizing the roadway, so reallocating some of the on-street parking and travel lanes for wider sidewalks and cafe seating in this block. Sort of a continuation of that thought is to move then across Main Street towards Meridian Road and do the next block of Idaho, and again right-size that, and maybe, they even maybe recommend starting with just doing a parklet next to the Sunrise Cafe, but essentially doing the same thing on that block to right-size the street to match what's going on just to the east. Site number nine is Second Street, south of Idaho. Potential activities include here, weekly food trucks with VRT and Compass and having a workforce there, tables and chairs and perhaps umbrellas, art on the fence, creating some kind of lighter, quicker, cheaper foreshadowing of a future water feature in the street along the side. So that water feature obviously wouldn't be a lighter, quicker, cheaper option, but maybe painting something that would represent water, and then in the future doing a full-blown project that would incorporate maybe a water feature there. Site 10 is Centennial Park in the community center. Here some potential activities just are more activities, and then some summer food truck events in the location there of the park. Site 11 is to improve the link on Idaho between Second and Third. So this is similar to Idaho where it's some right sizing of Idaho between Second and Third. They didn't recommend this as a high priority right off the bat, but did identify it as a potential project in the future. Site 12 is the alley and Broadway between Main and Second Street, although most of the recommendations have to do with improving the alley. This one, some of the potential activities or actions would be improving the alley on the western side, making it sort of an artist space. They likened it to Boise's Freak Alley potentially with some of the art, or hanging flags and canopies, also enhancing the appeal of the alley so restaurants open their eateries out onto the alley rather than walling it off. So that's, those are the top 12 sites. The other site, and this one, the last site I'm going to talk about is site number 13 across from the Feed Mill and City Hall Parking Lot here, is private property. Up to this point, all of the recommendations occur either in the public right-of-way or on city or agency-owned property, but this is a private property recommendation to hold some events here related to and tying in with the Zamsos Mill and markets and events related to Meridian's heritage and history there, and then also extending the theme of antique store potentially across the street with a flea market or other seasonal activities similar to that. The last one I'm not really going to talk about because it's kind of outside of the scope of the downtown area, it's on the other side of the railroad tracks, but it is there if you want to look at or prioritize. So with that, Madam Mayor, that's just to kind of get everyone comfortable and familiar. If you want to jump more into what is placemaking, what is lighter, quicker, cheaper, we can certainly have that dialogue, but we wanted to, as staff, you know, we get criticized a lot of times for a plan just sitting on a shelf or not doing anything with it, so we wanted to take this to the elected officials and decision-makers and the business owners and other stakeholders, and hear what should we be as staff working on, if anything. If you don't like any of these sites, any of the recommendations, that's fine, but we want to make sure that we get it in front of you, and if it is something we should be working on, we hear that from you so we can start to implement some things. So again, with that, I will conclude my remarks unless there's any other questions at this point.
Thank you, Caleb. Any questions from council on the presentation?
What?
Okay, well.
I agree with the term quicker, cheaper, lighter. Was there any definition of what cheaper might be as compared to not so cheap?
I would give a great example, and that would be Idaho Avenue between Main and Second. There's always been this desire to extend the sidewalks to encourage outdoor dining, and they said instead of going through the expense of doing that, try it out first and see if your community comes out and supports it, if it answers the desires that have been expressed by the property owners. You can show that parking doesn't necessarily go away, it's just a more narrow street, so you'll answer the questions or concerns that are expressed about losing parking. So instead of doing that hardscape, you try it out first. Another example is on Second Street with the painting of the water feature. It's been discussed at some points usually by me, is that it would be neat to see that as more pedestrian because it's bookended by the school and the UP property, that that could be a Hyde Street Park type of thing. And he said, well, instead of a major investment of the water feature going down the middle of that street, paint water in, let people envision it, and experiment if that's something that the community is interested in. So those are two examples that staff, you might have others.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Can we take, can we open up the, we've got a quorum now, so we can open up the...
Yes, I will note on the record that MDC does have a quorum with five of its members. Member Bird, member DeVere, member Escobar, member Jensen, and member Winter, as I noted Did you have any additional examples?
Madam Mayor, there are other examples. I don't know of what I heard when Gary was here and doing the presentation that there was a dollar amount or a cap for what constitutes cheaper or not cheaper. I think if it has to be in your capital improvements plan, it's probably not one of these projects. Doesn't mean it'll be free, but I don't remember him saying, you know, $5,000 or less or anything like that, so I don't think there's a cap, but that's the idea, is that you should have the resource on hand, it isn't something that needs to be programmed for, not saying there's any expense, but something that you can fairly easily fit into a budget.
I think Bruce might have something to add.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Councilman Barantire, I think a great example, we actually are familiar with for a couple years ago, when Brian created the parklets using a lot of his own labor and design work and donated materials and helps of park, help of park recreation and logistics. So we, you know, we found a way to make that happen.
Okay, so just to bring the members of MDC up to speed, we just watched the presentation that you had at your last meeting and wanted to have a conversation about the things that have come into this report, and if there are priorities, and we're looking for community champions to maybe be that point person, the person that makes it happen. So I guess I would ask Board President Escobar or Ashley if he could kind of give us an overview of what was discussed at MDC.
I was absent at the last meeting. Fortunately, I was on family vacation. Fortunately.
No. Fortunately.
So I missed that presentation.
I'll ask Ashley.
Madam Mayor, Mr. DeVere, we basically received an overview similar to what Caleb gave at our board meeting. Unfortunately, the board did not have much of a discussion, and knowing that this joint meeting was forthcoming, chose to wait until this opportunity to have a further discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I'd like to hear from the Downtown Business Association a little bit of what their thoughts are on it, because they're the actual, the ones that are involved down downtown here and their property and their businesses that we're looking at, and so if any of them's got something to say, I'd sure welcome myself.
Well, I guess I'll say.
Why do we know that?
You will have to...
If you could sit on one of the chairs right there, like...
All right. Can you hear me now?
My name is Joe Kazlowski. I'm president of the Meridian Downtown Business Association, and I've canvassed Idaho Avenue and talked specifically about the Idaho Avenue improvements that were part of this lighter, quicker, cheaper report, and there wasn't anybody that was against them. I mean, they see that as a positive. So I mean, that'd be something I'd love to see, and parking's always an issue. You know, if we were to ask every business, hey, what's your number one issue, and they'll always bring up parking. And so maybe there's a way we can, I don't know, try to save parking or add to the parking by, you know, a combination of extending the sidewalk for cafe-type seating and maybe having other areas where instead of parking parallel, you park at 90 degrees, and then I'd be open to looking at something like that. And I like the idea of having this be not a permanent, you know, not a highway district permanent extension, but something we can experiment with and see what works and what doesn't work.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I think, I agree with you, Joe. I think that's probably the easiest and cheapest way to try something, and I think it's fantastic we can do, and if it works out, we can have something like Eighth Street between Idaho and Banning. Perfect.
Or the basketball.
You can still drive through there, or the basketball. Yeah, you can still drive through there. As far as parking, I think people will find, I mean, we've got some parking lots around there and stuff, and it's not too far in the evenings to come use City Hall Parking Lot and walk over there.
Right.
We have churches to do it on Sundays.
Right, but just even the existing businesses, and you know, we have hopes for what new businesses are going to go in, but having that cafe seating and extending the sidewalks is just, it's an easy thing, and you know, you add to that the trees that are out, the planters that the city puts out, I mean, it's just, it's an excellent opportunity. So that'd be the first one I'd jump on.
I'd agree with you.
Other comments, thoughts on priorities, those kind of things?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to share a thought that if, I know that they've identified team leaders, but I think that's going to be the real impetus to making sure something gets done, is making sure that there's a leader that's accountable to whatever is our goal. So if we set a goal and make sure that we can identify a volunteer to become that team leader for the project. I see too many other projects that are great ideas that never get done because there's no accountability associated with making sure it gets done. Just a thought.
No, just reality.
Yeah, and I would share that unfortunately it looks like we see the same person's name, same two or three persons' name many times over and over in this document. It'd be great if we had members of the community that wanted to step in, and I don't know how we promote to the community the idea of having them come in and take charge, but there's great members in our community that could make some of these projects come into fruition.
I believe the hope is to have the conversation today to maybe put some priority ownership to, I don't think you can do all of them all at once, but to give a priority, then you can seek people that might have an interest in championing these events. Even the downtown business owners, if it's in Generations Plaza, you have some more obvious people with Flatbread or the businesses on Idaho Street that might have an interest in being that champion. I know Flatbread and Rex and Terra Nativa talked about some kind of a wine event and that they would run it, and that's exactly what, we want the business owners to have skin in the game and to see that they have partners around the table that will help them promote it or let people know that it's happening, that they take the lead. This is a very quiet room.
All right, let's go. Let's do it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll throw out some of my thoughts from, you know, looking at these different opportunities that are out there. I would agree with you regarding the Idaho Street, you know, that's always kind of been a passion of mine. Other areas or projects that I think have been identified would be, and it's not high on a lot of people's list, but the Centennial Park area, I keep, when the library held their food truck rally here in City Hall Parking Lot, I recently returned from a trip to Washington DC, and there were several little parks like that around Washington DC, and they, every day they had food trucks that were just lined along, and I realize it's a larger community base, but they were lined along the edge of each of those parking or parks, and people would just grab something, be sit in the park and do that. I think that there would be an opportunity to do something like that or make that easier to happen as far as the ability to bring them in. The other area would be the site number three, that space between the two buildings that MDC owns and the Bank of the Cascades Parking Lot. I think that one has some easy opportunities to create space, especially with the library and what they're doing there and creating kind of a, and there's some simple things, just simple things that you could do, like removing some of those really big bushes that are there that need to be pulled out, that curb that separates the two parking lots, if you were to pull that out and open it up a little bit and just pave that little piece over, I mean, it's this wide, that opens up that whole parking lot between the two spaces. I mean, granted, it'd be great to see something big happen there at some point, and if we're talking lighter, cheaper, faster, I think that would be an opportunity as well. Those are just my thoughts.
So Autumn Kersey and perhaps even, I don't think, Brechen is a clean person, I can't...
Nick.
Yeah, Nick. Nick would be a good person to also give a challenge to coming up with one thing, and same with Autumn, is finding that one thing that they could do, commit to for the upcoming year. I think as the Ventures Lab has opened up the area across the street from Harvest Church, I think they could almost be in charge of something either there or the parking lots on either side of City Hall. And we can certainly challenge them to do something like that, too. But yeah, it is trying to find those champions, or we can give it to Lori Jones because she makes things happen.
Amen to that.
Let the record note that Councilman Kavner has joined us.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Escobar.
One other item that seemed really simple and could have great turnout in the long run would be the relocation of the movie night into one of our parks in downtown. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is as a parent with little ones running around my house, it'd be great that they could sit and watch a movie while I could enjoy the opportunities offered in downtown Meridian nightlife. So it could bring that foot traffic in. I don't know what our dedication is out of the park where it's held now, or having a second opportunity in downtown, but that seemed like one of the suggestions that was pretty cost-effective and could have high traffic.
That's the Parks Department, Mike.
I'm listening.
They can send you here to defend?
No, I'm all ears.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Do we have a park downtown that's big enough? Do we have a park downtown that's big enough to hold the, the number of attendees that should go to movie night? Or we'd be adding a, a second movie night for a smaller?
I, I think it'd be more of a second movie night and, and when I, what I heard from the consultants when they came is it's not to replace the family movie night in Settlers Park. It was to be something different and unique. So whether it's showing old films of Meridian or even if you've gone to Lila Hill's presentation on irrigation, I, no, I thought it was interesting. You're not gonna fill the parking lot. But they, they identified City Hall Plaza, the area over by Harvest Church by the old theater, or Centennial Park. Those are three, or even Generations Plaza if you wanna keep it. If it's the irrigation presentation, maybe Generations Plaza's better. But it's, it's more, that is family oriented, so maybe you go films for the millennials. You contact the independent filmmakers that are local and say, do you wanna to kick off your film? This would be a venue for you. And I think the Ventures Lab might even be in a, an obvious partner to that because it, I guess videos are technical to me. That's my linkage. But those are, that's more along the lines of they're thinking not to, to complement rather than replace. But we know from family movie night, there are costs and the, the cheaper thing can quickly get expensive. So you would want downtown business buy-in to be part of the sponsoring and, and those kind of things. Other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
And I, this, you know, I've been a dreamer a long time. Boise's got their Live After Five and I, I'd like, we can't call Live After Five, but we can call it something. I'd like to see that happen downtown, but I don't think it's, I think that has to be done by an organization like the Downtown Business or somebody like that. I don't think it should be, be a public candidate that puts it on. I think, I think you get something like that, you'll get the young people down and you'll get the older people down and, and we're, we're, we're a unique downtown because we're small, but we've got three pretty busy large bars, so, you know. You're bringing a movie down here for kids, I'm, I'm afraid that our Parks Department's gonna wind up being babysitter while mom and dad goes, tries out the sides. But I would like to see the Downtown Association think about having something like a Live After Five. And we could, you know, we could lock a street off or, I, I just think if we got that going or we could do it here in City Hall in the, in the parking lot or something, get some food trucks down here and get some music and stuff and get the kids coming, having some stuff, get the young people. I definitely think that that would help get a lot of people downtown myself.
So are you gonna organize that?
Damn it, I told you, my Get Up and Go Got Up would win twenty years ago.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird, you want to organize?
Yeah.
Yeah, I love it.
You probably don't want that.
You could've Go Up and Got Up and Win, yeah, you're too young.
If it's not overly simplistic, the recommendations are before us, they're all sound, they're all relatively cheap. The ones in the first four that aren't necessarily geared on a single event, but more structured to kind of create a perpetual value add to downtown, as simple as tables and chairs. Their list is right in front of us, it looks like they've worked some done. I don't know if our task is to try and come up with things that we could do to improve downtown or just merely to have the political will to say, let's go forward on these first four. Take action has been recommended. I mean, some of these are clearly, for example, if it's a Parks obligation or if something had happened in a park or in City Hall Plaza, I mean, the city's gonna participate and not own that obligation to, to fulfill it, the Generations Plaza, City Hall Plaza in particular. All of the ideas are true. With the exception of sand.
Where's the look for the beach?
And I don't think making a decision to act on some of these negates the ability to do what Jim's talking about, which is some of those non-permanent experiment events. Do it once, see if it works, maybe it's terrible. It's not a wholehearted change of movie night Meridian, but you could do one. Maybe a movie that adults want to watch or have their kids watch and they go eat dinner.
Eighties movies.
Eighties movies, you know, exactly.
That'd be good, that would be nice.
But you could, you could make a decision to do tables and chairs in the plaza. Wrap the utility box with.
We already have tables and chairs in the plaza.
You can add more tables and chairs in the plaza.
We need a budget request.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. I'm, I'm sorry, missed that.
Oh, sorry. Somewhat in regards to, well, to your comment, Joe, about do it once. Do, doing it once generally doesn't get the people there, it kind of has to be tried several times before something ends up being successful if it's a new event. So let's say, at least try it a few times before we give up on it. But in regards to Site Two, the parking lot at City Hall, my recommendation on that one would be to not remove any parking lot based on the expense that we are seeing in what parking lots cost. But if, if we were going to try something temporarily, we could maybe put some fake grass or something to, to make, make it the, seem as though it were park-like. Kind of like the way the village does with their, they put their grass in and they're, but turn it into ice in the, in the winter. But I don't want us to be tearing up our parking lot. But the concept, I like.
And which recommendations?
That's on number two, removing a handful of spaces of parking. Maybe that's on the outside, or is that on the outside, not in the parking lot? At the street? At On Street, okay. Ones are just temporarily covering it up, I don't care if it works.
Not hearing from any champions. And I'm, I'm getting overwhelmed on behalf of our departments, the, the additional work, so.
I guess, I don't know what would be involved in extending those sidewalks temporarily. Are they talking, throw down pavers?
I, I think when we walked in with Joe, the conversation was that with painting the roadway and putting in planters. And I don't know what the cost of the planters are. Ashley, do you recall?
Madam Mayor, I believe they're about fifteen hundred dollars a piece. Big bunch.
So it's cheaper than extending the sidewalks out, but there still does have a cost to it. I, I know, Justin, do you wanna comment?
Yeah, I can provide.
You wanna come up here and comment?
I can probably stand a little closer here.
Yes.
Justin Lucas, Idaho County Highway District. Depending on the level of improvement you're trying to do, the cost of paint is, you know, relatively minimal. If you're adding any type of structure, if you want it to be level with the sidewalk, you know, there's a curb, so you might have to build it up a little bit, that can be done out of various materials. The only thing there is seeking a license agreement with the district, similar to what you did with the parklet. And I think that went relatively well with the ACHD commission. These types of improvements, you know, they would just have to be looked at. You know, the traffic engineers look at it for safety and things like that, but it's, it's, I think it's doable and something with the, the right type of design is, could be, could be easily, easy to implement. Certain things like accessibility do have to be looked at. And I just, you know, that would be something that whoever designs it would have to take a look and see how that all works out. There's temporary ramps and other things you could do to, to meet those needs.
What product can we use to, to build it up, wood?
I think potentially, depending on, I don't know what temporary means. If you're talking about six months, a year, a month, two weeks, I think all that would depend.
Well, I think you gotta leave it in for at least a good summer and fall, you know. In wintertime, you probably don't need it.
I think typically, as long as you're not harming the pavement underneath, I don't know if the district is gonna have too much of an issue with the material that you use, as long as it's safe and not, you know. As long as it's safe, I think that's gonna be the number one thing that, that ACHD would look at.
Well, from what I gathered, it would just be painting the, the strip that you're trying to add on to the sidewalk and adding the planters to be barriers. But you wouldn't even out the surface because it's temporary. It takes away the lighter, quicker, cheaper.
Sure.
Quicker, trying to get a license agreement might not be, that's an oxymoron or?
No, no, I, I think, Madam Mayor, we could, you know, if once the idea is solidified and you know what you wanna do, I remember when we, the parklet issue, I think there was some issues potentially at the lower level, but once it got up to the higher levels, there was no issue getting that forward. And we would get it to the higher levels very quickly.
So on, on that one, it sounds like it's a priority for the Downtown Business Association and it's certainly of interest to the city and MDC. Perhaps that will be a budget consideration for the hard cost. And on the city's side, we can work with ACHD in getting the license agreements and, and design elements. Mr. Neri.
I, I was gonna wait, I'm sorry, I'm trying to wait till you're done. I was gonna say, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the board, the license agreement we originally crafted for the parklets was intended to be a perpetual agreement, so we probably can revisit that, see if we just needed a simple addendum to that agreement. So that piece of, of this discussion, I think, probably is simpler than it can, it has been another occasion. I think we anticipated that being something that would continue in the future, so we crafted it that way. So I think we should be able to get that done really easily.
And Madam Mayor, if I can just maybe piggyback on that comment a little bit, I think that we did make good strides with ACHD with the first parklet and I think we have a good template to move forward. I'll just, since my name is already on Site Seven, I'll just go ahead and volunteer to go ahead and lead that. And I'll probably get with Mr. Kozlowski as well and, and make sure that the businesses and just reinforce and make sure, it's, it's great to hear that the businesses are on board with this, but I do wanna sit down with them, make sure they understand kind of the scope of what we're talking about doing with ACHD traffic, what, what can we do? I don't think we can probably want to or can't afford to buy planters to, to define the parking areas from the, the seating areas, but maybe there's a shorter version of a Jersey barrier rail or something, something that can kind of differentiate parking or vehicle areas from that. But we don't need to worry about all those details today. I do like sites and, and potential projects and a lead. And again, I'm willing to do that, but I will need help from the businesses, from ACHD. I mean, there are a lot of folks and then, but I'll, I'll go ahead and, since it sounds like that's a priority for pretty much everybody, take that one on. And there's, there's one anyways that I've heard that we can move forward with, so.
Well, and I, I will say that because of a grant from LuCross, the youth farmers market is starting to gain some traction. We have several community members who have stepped up in helping to plan. We'll have a, a conversation perhaps tomorrow with council about it. But that, that could be one of the City Hall parking lot things with the youth farmers market. And they're, from the grants, in order to get it, we do need to have one event this year knowing that the, the real farmers market will roll out next year. But to satisfy the grant, there needs to be at least one event this year, which we're working on.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Escobar.
I believe the MDC does own two planters that are sitting empty right now, that could be used as part of this project. Potentially.
So we can have Caleb and Ashley and Joe kind of huddle and maybe Justin to, to get some next steps rolling now.
Yep.
I'm good. Eric?
I was just gonna ask.
Mr. Jensen.
I'm sorry. Could the existing planters just be pulled down as well into the space to kind of give some of that definition that currently sit on the sidewalk?
Well, they're connected to water lines and various things that would complicate it and make it more expensive.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Rafferty.
You know, these are all great ideas. Having been responsible and in charge on the council during Generations Plaza, I understand the hesitancy of people stepping up and doing this stuff. The issue I see is that every one of these is gonna have some cost. And it's not much, but it's gonna be something. And I think from the city's perspective, what we can do is we can do things on our side with our funds. I would propose that we establish a small, quick, easy and cheap grant program that maybe we could run through MDC to grant some hard monies to buy a planter or rent some rail or whatever to get some of these things off the ground if somebody's interested in taking the lead or organizing. I'm not interested in having all of these projects having as Meridian City staff person be the lead. But if, if the Downtown merchants want to do Idaho, I think it's great. It's fun, the picture we have here of the park, the parklets, in my mind, is what it is. We want a helpful theater to start. Let's do it, let's say we're gonna do it, let's figure out how much it costs and how much we're, how much it's gonna get into our pocketbooks. Instead of just talking about it. Because I've stepped through way too many of these over the last sixteen years of talk. We've got some good ideas that, that ACHD wanting to be a partner on these, these kinds of things. Essentially, we'd give them a go ahead, it'll be just a matter of really then to sign off, so let's, let's do it. But I'm, I am for at least providing some seed monies to make it happen. Hopefully, MDC can do the same thing through some kind of a grant program. Say, I don't, the four projects that are picked as priorities, I, I can't tell you which ones are my favorite. Which one, I don't even know what it is. I think they're all good projects. I'd like to see them all happen. I'd like to see the city do something, I don't know, in our plaza, something different than concerts on Broadway. And not, not in, but in addition to that.
In addition to, yeah. No, I, I got what he was saying.
No, that's great, but that's, that's four nights of summer. It sits idle or it provides parking for the associated churches around City Hall, so. Funding, financing, some kind of seed money is what it's gonna take to get somebody to have, to want to spend the energy to do the organization and the structure of this, to bring it to fruition.
And add to commitment, that even the, the Vero project. And add to commitment, even the, the road project, which would be awesome, but you put planters out there that doesn't have irrigation to it, you need a commitment from the businesses that are going to water those. Because I can guarantee you, our staff are not going to walk down there every other day to, to water the plants. So, there, there will be some considerations in maintenance and those kind of things, and so, Mr. Burke?
Madam Mayor, I, I'm trying to get it on the head, but I just, I think MDC's got special project money, we got a little bit, and it's, it, we can take, the financing, I think, between the two entities, we can take care of on this first project. But you know what, I'd just like to see the first project get done on something that we've had studies on. Charlie's right, I've spent seventeen, eighteen years here, and I don't know how many studies between MDC and the city we've had about downtown Meridian.
And all that money.
And we, and all that money we put out, and you know.
Well, you're sitting in one of them and you're next door to another, the split corridor, so.
Well, this was, this was, this was a necessity that we had to do. So, let's, let's, unlike Charlie, let's get, let's get something done, we'll figure out, and let's don't take a month to ponder over it. Let's get going and get that Idaho Street thing done this summer so we can get some people down there.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Marty, would you step closer to the table so our recording can pick you up?
Good evening, my name is Martin Schindler. My background is in horizontal vertical development, and I'm sorry Eric's not here. He could contribute to this conversation more than I could in aspects of retail and organization. When I heard the word smart growth and then being proactive with the community, what I believe is, you know, the covenant is to understand or for myself, is what's been done in the past, also what the future may let in. And I've looked at the vision plan lately, and I've centered out some individuals in the board to talk to them in regards to what's been done in the past. I see the Idaho project as a value to the community as well as to the city. I recently have contracted a property on Idaho, so fortunately now I'm owning that property, but I don't, not here to promote that aspect of it, please understand that. What I'm here to understand and make others aware is what the community can offer if we look at the Eighth Street project in Boise. I worked on urban renewal in the city of Denver, Colorado for over twenty years. We talked about inner sort, inner core development, we talked about the heart of the community and not the outskirts of it. We started from the core and we built out, and I see the Idaho project, that being, and you know, I'd certainly, you know, offer my assistance for championing that project with Joe and other councilmen to make that happen, and we could get that done this summer as a team. Anyway, that's.
Awesome.
Awesome, we got, we got.
Sign him up.
We got to leave it, Caleb.
And then just tell us, Marty, what project next?
Yeah.
Any other comments on this one? We have one more presentation on Pine Street, anything, anything further on this? MDC perhaps can have additional conversation as well, as well as the conversation.
Make sure this, there's fourteen projects in the, I think the CAVI. There's fourteen projects in this document that have value, don't, don't lose sight of the rest of them. I think they're, they are quick and easy, and some of them aren't so cheap still.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. Okay, I'll turn this over to Caleb regarding. To Brian. To who?
Turn this over.
Uh, Justin, to.
Madam Mayor, members of the MDC Commission, I'm here today to speak to you about an update to the Pine Avenue project. Like Caleb, you also should have these slides before you in case you can't see the screen. As a refresher, this map illustrates the extent of the project from Meridian to Locust Grove, obviously on Pine Avenue. The project began as a request by the city to ACHD to improve sidewalk and bicycle infrastructure. The last time I updated council and MDC, both were in January of this year. Since then, the scope has changed significantly. On the left, you'll see the original scope, sidewalk repair, some widening, parkway, AKA landscape strip, bike lanes, some curb replacement, and repairing the Five Mile Creek Bridge to allow for both bike lane and sidewalk. On the right, you'll see the new scope, just highlighting differences is sidewalk widening per cross-section plan, the difference being in the ultimate size and location. Realign curb location and formalize roadway edge, again, in the ultimate location. Resurface the roadway and repair the crown, as most people are familiar with, the crown on, on that roadway is significant and makes it challenging to cross for anyone with accessibility issues. And then widen Pine from three lanes to five, to fi, from Five Mile Creek to Atkins, so you'd be putting in a turn lane. So, the, the big question is why the change would happen? The big reason is Public Works, for, for good reasons. Essentially, they want to align sewer and potentially water projects with ACHD improvements. They need to vacate old sewer in the alleys and reconstruct in Pine. They need to make new sewer connections to the affected properties, approximately fifty-five, and potentially do some water line replacements depending on the condition after they pothole. Consequently, ACHD changed their scope. This was, for, for a number of reasons, and they perhaps can speak better to it, but chiefly is to reduce the impacts on the stakeholders. The roadway condition left after Public Works makes improvements will have a lot of patches, which is not ideal. Going through multiple periods of, of significant construction is not fun for anyone. To do this, they moved ahead a project tentatively scheduled twenty, twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six to resurface Pine to twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, and then delayed this project. The project improvements now occur for the length of the corridor. Just briefly refresh here, the, the Pine Avenue cross-section is before you. This was adopted by the city and MDC last year. This is typically within the urban renewal area for, for what you're seeing there. Briefly, just to recap what we've heard from both MDC and council previously, there is a desire to respect and limit impacts to private property, in limited conditions to prioritize first seven-foot sidewalks, reducing parkway buffers that's necessary from eight to six feet, to explore feasibility of a bulbout crossing at Pine and East Third. As a reminder, that would be, also be where the city has a pedestrian bicycle corridor planned. And then, in the future, for Parks to do a design, concepts for this, in coordination with MDC and the public. So, cost to city and MDC, the first line you'll see there is a hundred fifty thousand dollars, that hasn't changed much from what I talked to you last time. That is for seven-foot sidewalks and six-to-eight foot buffer within the urban renewal area. There's a couple of new question areas, and I'll, I'll touch on these in the upcoming slides. Essentially, though, it's fifteen to sixteen thousand for on-street parking, just immediately north of the newer kind of alley-loaded product at the end, edge of the urban renewal area, near the Five Mile Creek pathway. And then potentially fifty-one thousand dollars for landscape buffer and extended sidewalk from approximately where Sixth Street would intersect with Pine, it doesn't, to Atkins. So, what's before you today for clarification and request for information preference on a number of items? The, the first one here is to explore and enhance crossing on East Second, that would include bulbouts, whether there's appetite by MDC or the city to, to pay for any infrastructure that ACHD did not pay for. Just a couple of notes here, the, this would not be signalized like the East Third Street eventually with a hawk pedestrian crossing, it would just be a, a crosswalk, similar to what you see on Main Street up and down. Staff's preference is to at least have one on East Third Street. If MDC and ACHD and the city were all agreeable, then we could definitely push for East Third and East Second, but East Third is definitely staff's preference for, if we're gonna put some money somewhere for that to be the location. In terms of on-street parking, there's a request for clarification on what the city and MDC would like to see. ACHD standard is seven and a half feet. The cross-section plan currently shows eight and a half feet, that is simply because that's what ACHD and MDC did for the Compass VRT building. Seven and a half feet, though, is adequate, and that is what ACHD standard is. And then, cross-section priorities, from approximately the Sixth Street intersection to the county parcels, there's a significant bottleneck of right-of-way available there, and what those priorities would be for council and MDC. You could look at wider sidewalks, sixty-seven feet, entryway thematic place making, AKA the parkway, and then on-street parking. The on-street parking would come with a, and this goes back to the previous slide, a cost to MDC, it's within the urban renewal area, at fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars. For whatever reason, we were unable to figure out why, those properties there when they developed did not have to install a curb and gutter, they did not have to formalize their parking edge, and they did not have to donate any right-of-way to be consistent with the rest of the corridor. So, the question there would be, what would MDC and city council's preference be for the ultimate, we're not going to go here again, cross-section in that area? I'll just pause there before I go on anymore, if there's any comments or direction.
Any comments?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Escobar.
I'll put some of my thoughts out there, and I speak for myself, not the board, but exploring the enhanced crossing on East Second, to me seems obvious that it would be a yes. In my research, traffic strives at the speed it feels safe at, and these bulbouts provide that opportunity for traffic to recognize this is a pedestrian area, and with our discussion about trying to connect Second Street and making it more pedestrian-friendly, now's the time to be able to do that. And then on the on-street parking width, eight and a half feet is more comfortable, but I think staying with ACHD standard is fine. I don't, I don't see why we would want to vary from that unless there's a particular instance where it is too tight. And cross-section priorities, Sixth, Sixth County, I don't, I don't know that I would want to address the Sixth Street area at this time. I would, I would save that for future. I don't know, but I don't know the specifics about it, whether or not it makes, there's a reason, an impetus to why we would do it now rather than with future development.
So, Jim, in, in response to that question, this is kind of our opportunity to finish the streetscape and street to its ultimate improvement, and we're probably not going to revisit this again. The location in question here has redeveloped, those are those alley-loaded homes, and it's not likely to redevelop anytime soon, so the chance of coming back to it later to add curb gutter, parking if, if wanted, parkway if wanted, is unlikely to be revisited within any of our light times.
And follow-up? It's not a big price tag in comparison to the overall project. If it makes sense to do it now, then I'd leave that in the hands of the ones that are developing exactly what this plan should be. I'm not against it, this is what I'm saying.
Other comments?
Madam Mayor, I agree with Commissioner Escobar. It makes sense.
Me too.
Thank you. Moving on, for the county parcels just east of the ones we just discussed, what are the cross-section priorities there? There's several considerations here, consideration for the right-of-way, for the landscape buffer and detached sidewalk, and for the wider sidewalk. And then, in the larger scheme of things, from, from Sixth Street to Atkins, what that looks like right now is with a six-foot sidewalk and a six-foot buffer, which is smaller than what we've been doing west of there because of, of right-of-way issues, that'd be a fifty-one thousand dollar cost to the city because that is outside of the urban renewal area. That would be consistent with ACHD livable streetscape design guidelines, similar to what ACHD would require of new development. Alternatively, we could ask ACHD to hold off on doing anything there and wait for redevelopment. And again, just a reminder here, pending redevelopment, this is the Pine Avenue entryway corridor.
Brian, what budget year is this needed in?
I'm sorry?
If council was interested, the budget year, the money would need to be budgeted for?
I believe that's two thousand eighteen.
Any thoughts from council on this? Okay. Looks like council is, is supportive of the recommendation and budgeting. Pardon? Get it done.
Yep. Get public groups to get their drawings and stuff in there so they're not holding up any construction. Because once ACHD starts, let's get it done.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, just next steps here. ACHD's working to generate some initial design concepts, hopefully to be done this fall. Preliminary design supplemental is scheduled for November eleventh. Parks will then coordinate, if agreeable, to streetscape design options based on these concepts. Public outreach needs to occur, and then begin construction in late two thousand seventeen to early two thousand eighteen. Just a clarification here, and Cody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm under, I'm under the impression that the bridge would likely come first before the rest of the corridor, and that's why you see two thousand seventeen here. With that, I'll stand for any other questions or put Cody on the hot seat.
Any further questions from council or MDC?
I have none.
Okay, well, thank you, Brian. Have we answered all of your questions?
You have, thank you.
Anything further from council or MDC? I would like to thank MDC for being here and on projects to this magnitude in terms of Pine Street, but also in moving forward on the recommendations by PPS, it's very valuable, sitting in the same room and having a discussion. So, if there isn't anything further, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Would you like to adjourn?
I would entertain the motion to adjourn as well.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you all. Thank you, guys.